22 drunk highway to 10 Inglewood Drive improvements in the 2022 Foley Road, Isle Drive and Fourth Road improvements project. Twenty-two authorized staff to advertise the 1996 Ford gal 8,000 dump truck with snowplow and salt sander attachments on the Minnesota surplus sale site. Twenty-three approved 2022-2023 contract for Chamber of Commerce services. Twenty-four except planning zone commission meeting minutes from August 10, 2022. Twenty-five, number twenty-five adopt resolution 2022-066 approving a variance to the required 100-foot setback to Baxter Lake for property located at 4961 Oak Street. Number twenty-six adopt resolution 2022-067 approving variances to the required 30-foot bluff setback for property located at 12222 Campbell Trail. Number twenty-seven approval appointments to the seasonal positions of park attendant and public works maintenance and approve hourly wage adjustments for current seasonal employees. Number twenty-eight special event application for Lakes Country Triathlon on August 28, 2022. Twenty-nine appoint Aaron Client to the position of Public Works Maintenance Two, entry five, step one of the absentee pay grade and step schedule. Adequate question on twenty-eight, said approve the special events application.
That's correct.
Correct. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we're not quite done, but. Number thirty? I'm still able to breathe, so we must not be done yet. I'm going to be twenty-nine.
That's the listing on the work list.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct. As you were. Kevin, watch my cross.
I'll say yes.
Second by Kevin, all fair.
Aye.
All fair. Post same sign, motion carries. Sorry to forget, my glasses are on. Thanks for calling that out. Okay, now we're on under business number thirty.
We have the one pulled, thirteen was pulled by Councilman Kevin.
I'm sorry.
Just wanted to ask on number thirteen related to Parkwood Drive parking, based on the info in the packet, I was just a little confused on, was it something that we already had no parking and it was never signed, or just looking for a little more context on it? Confirm.
We had signed many years ago the west side of Parkwood from Kingwood down to Mount Nash, because there was no secondary parking lot, there was only the one parking lot on Kingwood, so we were building here in game and stuff to park in the ditch. This year with the rec program getting larger, we had a lot of parks on the grass in our parks, and they weren't using the parking lot on the south side of the facility, you know, in front of the warming house. So the help in do enforcement, we wanted to take and now we have no parking on the east side of Parkwood from Mount Nash to Kingwood.
Okay, I think that goes to the question that popped to mind for me was just, it's that there is a parking lot that is not completely full and overflowing, that's they're choosing not to use it.
They're choosing, they're choosing the shortest distance to the ball field.
Okay.
Instead of being trying to get more healthy and walk more, they want to walk less.
Good. Okay, I just wanted to confirm because had it just been overflowing, I don't know if we were solving the problem or not, so that makes sense. All right, I approve that we adopt that resolution. Second.
Second by Cross, any further discussion? All fair.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, now we move on to other business number thirty. Adopt resolution 2022-068 and 069 approved to a preliminary final plat on our third edition.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. This is a request by Menards for a number of applications to expand that facility. And this first page on the screen identifies all of the applications that were requested. We've got preliminary and final plat, three conditionally used permits, and five variances. Just prior to the planning commission meeting, there were four additional variances, and I wanted to explain to the council that part of the package on what we have has some plans that included these four variances, but I wanted to make it clear for the record, the applicant, just prior to the planning commission meeting, did send and withdraw four of the variances, all of which related to a loading dock expansion to Whispering Woods. And I'll point that out on the plans, but those four particular variances are our main point at this juncture, but show up in part of the pack, but the plat variance and the, or excuse me, the plat resolution and the CUP and variances resolution that are attached are what's being requested here this evening. Specifically looking at the preliminary and final plat, first of all, the subject site, we're all familiar with Menards property in town, but specifically regarding the plat, what's being requested is to take a single family, a former single family home property that was on the backside of the store, which is, this is the footprint of the store and accessory building and yard space behind the store. Behind that was a single family home, Menards has acquired that property, and that is part of the yard expansion that's being proposed here this evening. That house has already been removed from the property, and their request is to include that as part of the yard expansion and a second accessory building being built behind this other accessory building. And the plat allows this parent parcel, if you will, of Menards to include this separate lot, so there's a lot consolidation happening on this parent parcel of Menards. Menards also acquired the property across the road of Whispering Woods Lane to the north. This is plotted as an outlot, and Menards is proposing an off-site parking lot with a crosswalk that winds up with the front of the store here. And as part of the plat, there's an outlot being established for this pond on the north end of the property, and then a lot block property to allow the addition of the parking lot, that's part of the request. And this is the plat that shows those subject lot changes. You can see the single family property combined and the outlot being created to the north of a lot block for the parking lot. On the plan set that's in the packet, the off-site parking lot is shown with the plans and related stormwater expansion that's being requested. The accessory building is shown as well as the yard expansion. This area that's darker black color, and this outline here relates to the loading dock and the variances that were withdrawn by the applicant. So there is a condition in the resolution that talks about basically that asking Menards if approved this evening that they would revise their plans to remove the loading dock from their plans prior to the issues of the building permit. Essentially what would happen here, since this is no longer part of the plant's middle, is Menards would have their fence, which is currently there already, along, parallel in Whispering Woods Lane for this portion, and it would just become part of the yard area as it is today. Another plan showing just some of the improvement areas in red, this building is already here, but you can see the accessory building and yard space behind with fencing wrapping around. And then the continuation of the fence would be basically here to the corner of the store and that off-site parking lot. This is zoomed into the parking lot. You can see there's seventy-five parking spaces being added. If the council will recall, there's been a number of variances approved for parking charge for Menards, so obviously this application certainly will help a great deal with alleviating any, well, with reducing that parking deficit per the ordinance standards, and will allow employee parking to be separated from the main Menards parking lot and allowing those spaces to be used for the retail spaces.
What sizes are those spaces?
The parking stalls, ten by twenty. And there's a crosswalk here, it is mid-block, the utilities commission, discussion about the city planning commission, and a request to defer a utilities commission recommendation, which was for the push button flashing safety signal. The commission did recommend that that can remain a condition that Menards would have to build the push button flashers at the crossing, as it is a mid-block situation, it's also This is zoomed into the kind of yard expansion area, this is the new building proposed, so this would be another, for those of you that have been back in the yard area, you can actually drive through these accessory buildings, this new building would be no different, with openings to drive through to pick up product and then loop around and come back out. In terms of the entire layout, the yard and entrances of the south end of the store, and that would remain, so you loop in and you would just be able to go further within the yard area and then come back out as it is today. This is a rendering of what the accessory building would look like, basically the same type of construction as what the other buildings have been built with. And the exterior metal that's proposed with the exterior building, accessory building as well. The utilities commission did make a recommendation to the planning commission, those conditions were all included in the resolution. These light grade out items, just for reference, were recommendations that related to the variances which are now moved. When looking at the preliminary plat, there is a park dedication due for the northerly lot, so that's in the resolution. There's some right-of-way dedication on Whispering Woods, which the applicant is showing on the plat, and access would be provided for the new parking lot at Pearl Drive. In terms of the conditionally used permits, there's three conditionally used permits. One is to allow an expansion of the CLTR. Another conditionally used permit is to allow a third accessory building on the property. And the third conditionally used permit is to allow an off-site parking. And there's standards in the ordinance for all three of those conditionally used permits, and I'm not going to go through all that in detail, but we have reviewed those ordered standards in the applicant's meeting, those standards with the exception of any variances that are part of this as well. The application includes variances as well, and it's the five variances up above here. There is variance for the off-site parking lot to allow that off-site parking lot to not be attached to another parking lot and principal structure that is in the code, and so variance is being asked to basically build, basically an off-site standalone parking lot. There's an accessory structure setback for the fence area, more specifically the racking area that's behind the fence. Menards, when they build those fourteen-foot-high fences around the yard, behind it they have a racking structure so they can stack product, and that's considered an accessory structure and doesn't need to set back on Whispering Woods, so there's a variance there. Also, we don't allow fences over six feet in the city and in the front yard, I think it's even four feet, so there's a fourteen-foot-high fence variance being requested. And then the other two, last two variances are about the exterior finishes of the accessory structure, using metal for a hundred percent of the accessory structure, and then to allow an articulated accessory structure on the front facing side, which is really enclosed by the fourteen-foot-high fencing. The planning commission did recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat, the three conditionally used permits, five variances, subject to the conditions and findings in the two resolutions. One condition that the planning commission did add, made of the meeting, was to add a condition so that there would not be an allowance for semi-truck parking on Menards property, and that relates to the condition from the last parking variance as well, so just kind of carryover from the last variance approval. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions of Josh?
I guess I did have just one clarification I'm looking for on that off-site parking variance, and it might just be the way it gets worded in that paragraph, I was just kind of confused about. So the standard is that parking lot that's off-site, if it didn't need a variance for this, it would have a separate building of some principal use on that property, is that what that's?
So when that code got changed, it was, you know, we have a couple off-site parking lots that aren't really connected to anything, they're kind of standalone. One of the, one of the issues is they can be left alone, not maintained, maybe the same as the same property, and so the idea was for that particular ordinance standard is if you're going to do an off-site parking lot across the street, it should be connected to an existing building parking lot and then do a CUP for joint easement between the properties, so that you've got kind of a, an aesthetic situation where that parking lot would look like it's part of another use or building. In this particular case, you know, there's great support for the parking lot because of the need for parking at this particular retail store, so, you know, from a findings perspective, that was overwhelming interest from city staff's initial recommendation and support of that variance.
Makes sense.
Any else? Have any questions, comments?
Sure. At least to go all the way here, you know.
Long ways from work.
Right. I'm on vacation while I'm away home. I'm telling everyone some real estate representative from Menards, over the past few months, we've had the opportunity to buy three properties around our store. One's a commercial lot lot in front, you know, strip center. One is a vacant tract land or historic, one's a residential property behind us. We're always short on space, thanks to that big pond slash wetlands, took the opportunity by all three of those. Working on a little project here, the, just to essentially clear out some of the yard space, try to make it a little bit safer, that's where this yard expansion and warehouse building came from, bought less materials in the middle of your cars, so people can go to a destination. And then with the off-site parking, we really, building a parking lot is big enough for our employees to park it, that's how we're going to work with that, where it is, what size it is, that'll get employees out of the main retail parking lot, but a menage parking lot across the street. Overall, it's more of the same. Do want to make the same request to me at the planning commission when it comes to the crosswalk, electronic flashers. Minnesota DOT recommends electronic crossing on an average of nine thousand cars a day. Anything less than that, they do not think needs electronic crossing. There's only six houses on the end of this road. We are requesting that any electronic flashers or crosswalk button system is implemented when Whispering Woods is extended and connected to some other future roads. Just did not seem like a necessary part of the project with limited traffic and homes near the construction. That's my one request. With that, happy to answer any questions.
So what was the third property you bought? I only saw two.
The next to the, I think it's firehouse subs, matches store up front, there's actually a other commercial lot that we would like to bring another business to town, we thought why not.
So you're incorporating that into this, into your plan, or it's going to remain a separate?
It's going to, correct. We just, we think we know a lot of people that like to build next to Menards, so we want to attract a little business, sure, all that, it's a good opportunity to do that.
So there's a question for Trevor, what's the ADT on over there by Fleet Farm?
Excelsior. How long? Excelsior. Excelsior is about, I think it's upwards of thirty-six hundred a day, four thousand, somewhere in that range. On Del, when you're talking.
Excelsior.
Whispering.
Oh, I'm talking about the south side of Fleet Farm. Excelsior, excelsior.
Or the other flushing line is at?
Oh, cross-eyed Fleet Farm.
Correct.
That one's at about nine thousand cars a day. I don't know what he, if that statement is a mid-block crossing or an intersection crossing that he stated.
Do we have any other remote parking lots?
The only other one we have that is up at the Toyota dealership on Hickwood Drive.
And Mills Ford.
Oh, yeah, and Mills Ford has the employee parking lot on Zollers. But I don't think they use that anymore. Very many cars have repartied there anymore. Used to be when I first started here. We have three of them in town.
Thanks. Any others? Trevor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's have that street cleared, maybe just park in the lots rather than park in the lawn.
The motion that was approved by PNC did include the blinking light. There was some discussion about it, and the title of his case, and Menards feeling is there's not enough traffic at this point, and the road gets punched through to do it, but they felt kind of strong, and it should happen now, there are been discussions. This group can change that if they want.
Was there any discussion on the estimated cost of what that would take?
He might know why not.
I actually don't, I'm guessing it's somewhere between the, around the five thousand dollar range for the lights and electricity, but I don't know.
You could order a solar one. Would that be what it would be?
No. You'd have it, you'd have it fully electrified because it's, solar won't keep up in the winter.
We got a bunch on the camp, and they're, they're all solar.
Are they all solar?
Yeah.
So.
And I know we don't have the six thousand, but it was an issue.
I think the concern from the utilities commission was more of actually giving pedestrian a chance at the different times of day because of westbound traffic coming out of that neighborhood, which we know it's low, but the sunlight at certain times when the sun's going down, at least the flashers would give you another warning that there's somebody in that crosswalk. That was, and then at night, of course. The one thing they, they were kind of pushing on too was, we talked about, should we light, should we lit at a minimum, and it's a mid-block crossing, you know, should there be an actual street light there? So they were going back and forth between streetlights, flashing lights, and just signage. I mean, that's your, signing was minimal, it must be put in at a minimum, they felt. Probably should be lit at a minimum, but I think it was kind of split with the utilities commission fifty-fifty of whether the, of whether the flashers were really needed at this time. But they were really pushing about because it's employee park, the streetlight, you know, putting a light down there while their employees going home in the winter time and coming to work in the dark in the winter time because of the store hours.
That's probably the bigger issue, is the dark. So is, is it being lit, or is it being lit on this proposal, at the parking lot crosswalk?
No, we don't have a lighting plan at this time. The ordinance says that any lighting that's submitted would have to comply with the zoning ordinance, but that doesn't make that what lighting, so if that's the direction the council would want to go, we want to add a condition.
So I prefer to have flashers over light. Was there, was there light proposed in the parking lot?
We don't have photovoltaics light yet, but yes, there'll be lights.
Well, that's what's in motion. Somebody wants to make it or change it. I will make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty-two, zero sixty-eight and zero sixty-nine. Yes, sir. Motion across.
Second.
Second by Kevin, any further discussion? All fair. See aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Thanks for working with us.
Thank you.
Have a nice journey back.
Yeah, thank you.
Number thirty-one vacating, is there any to utilities on the lots, one and two block, one have an addition?
Your Honor, Council, this is our request for vacation easements, specifically this is two parcels of land, east side of Porch Lake. The subject properties are on the screen here. Basically, what's being proposed from a lot perspective is to take this hatched area, which is basically on the southeast side of Porch Lake, is to basically take this hatched area from the northerly lot and put it onto the southerly lot, if you will, so it's basically a lot line adjustment, which can be approved administratively based on our administrative subdivision allowances, but with the previous plat, it does change the drainage utility easement situation, so we're looking for a vacation easement so that we can reestablish the easement with the adjusted lot line. Basically, what's happening here is the subject property to the north has a single family home, the property owners itself are basically family, and they are selling that southerly lot, and the addition of this land makes that property probably more saleable. So just an adjustment between the two properties, they're both would be conforming lots. We're going from two lots to two lots, so really it's just an internal adjustment.
So going to be vacating and then establishing a new easement?
Yeah, the hearing is to vacate, and then we'll make sure as a staff, as part of, before we record the lot line adjustment to get the new easement established.
Okay, is there an exhibit showing the, showing the current easement that we're going to? I know it's probably on that little diagonal lot line, but is there a, is it showing that?
Yeah, so we're vacating, we're vacating the ten-foot drainage utility easement over and across that parts of lot one and lot two, which is.
So you're vacating the whole utility?
Yeah.
You're going to put in a new one?
Yeah, a lot of the internal online.
Any questions of Josh? We'll open the movement carrying up to the seventh, if I can see right, seven thirty-two. Anybody here to comment on this? Stand on, we'll close the hearing at seven thirty-two fifteen, break it back to the council. Number two adopt resolution twenty-two, zero six five. Motion to approve. Motion across.
Second.
Second by those, any further discussion? All fair.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, we move on to council comments.
Just to remind youth in the area and families that the Coannis Kids Triathlon will be coming up, I think it's twenty-seventh of August, it's always such a fun event and a great way to showcase Purple Beach and its surrounding properties.
Very good, Karen.
I'll just mention that maybe everybody got the email a few days back about just a president suggesting the concept of a community center or something similar, not necessarily saying that, jumping on the concept right this minute, but saying, you know, as we're looking at capital improvements over the future, maybe that's something that would be beneficial, or some sort of a recreational facility that could be used for multiple purposes might be a worthwhile thing to research as we're looking forward.
That was a email?
Yeah, and I can tell, it's one of those that came through the website, can't tell if anyone else got it back on the twelfth.
I did.
Just kind of saying, they were visiting Perron, thought the community center was awesome there, they've had the ability to do swimming, working out, roller skating, indoor play in the winter, and just basically said that they'd love to see something like that in their home community of Baxter.
Okay, thank you. Ted, you got it?
Yep.
Carter, watch out for motorcycles. Just got a few things. First, I just want to thank all of our judges during this last election. It's a long day, it's a long day for those people, and sure that there may have been some hesitancy this year, but they did a great job, Kelly for rounding them up and making sure that we had the right amount and numbers of people appreciate that. And just to tie it to Connie there, both triathlons are that weekend, the kids, the kids are in the evening and in the afternoon on Saturday, and the adults are on Sunday, and both of those groups involve the tears, so if you're looking to, it is fun, it is fun to watch them, and so either one of those groups would appreciate your help if you feel.
And so either one of those groups would appreciate your, your help if you so desire. And again, like she said, it's a chance to showcase our part too. Reminded of ribbon cutting through, see if it works for you. And then.
Span on that place.
The ribbon cut. Is that the plates you paint there?
Okay.
That one locked, should be a notice in your mailbox. Got much to. And a condolences to Connie's husband, Todd, who lost his mother this week. And our lots are, are with him.
Congratulations on the new grand daughter.
On the flip of that, mine is kind of competent life that's coming to void in their family. That's exciting on that side too. Say administrator?
Just a quick reminder that two weeks from tonight, we have our first, our, our budget work session. The thirtieth, six p.m.
Say that again, speak up.
Budget work session, August thirtieth, two weeks from tonight, at six p.m.
At six?
Correct.
You have to speak up first. That it?
That is.
Anything from our attorney?
There is nothing.
Okay, we'll let our motion attorney.
Someone?
Second. Motion by Cross, I'll favor it.
Aye.
Thank you.